Good, you've truncated all this, all the phone numbers and stuff on.
Yes. What?
That's wonderful.
I really have.
Ready?
Uh, let me make sure we're broadcasted. Yes, sir.
All right. We'll go ahead and call to order the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Board of Planning Commission meeting on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. So we'll have the roll call. Four members are present, and Mr. Lucas, you are here electronically. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're all here, all present in some way, shape, or form. While the room is open to the public due to the size of the meeting room and social distancing requirements, no more than ten attendings will be allowed into the room at one time for the Governor of Commonwealth Virginia's Act of Order sixty-three. All persons over the age of ten that do not have a precluding medical condition are asked to wear a face covering. We'll hold citizen comments near the beginning of the meeting. At that time, the public is welcome to make comments unrelated to any of the public hearings for tonight. On tonight's agenda, comments related to public hearing should be held until the item is discussed and that public hearing is open. We'll do our best to take citizen comments remotely, and there are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar, um, the link is available on the county website. Copy into the address line on your browser. Secondly, to join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature, and you can press the raise hand feature button on the bottom of the Zoom window, or press the star nine if you're calling by telephone. But this time, we'll proceed with the meeting, and we'll start with citizen comments on anything not on tonight's agenda. And I'll remind everybody that in addition to participating by Zoom or telephone, written citizen comments have been solicited for receipt by way of email, US Mail, and Dropbox located at the front entrance to the county administration building. I'll now open the floor to innocent comments for anything not on tonight's agenda. Staff, do we have anybody physically present to speak?
No, sir. No one physically present. Uh.
Do we have any written comments?
No written comments received on, on citizen comment portion.
Do we have anyone who wished to make citizen comment by way of the Zoom or telephone?
Uh, I do not have any raised hands or, uh, question and no open questions. Uh, there with me? Let me make one more. No, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting and move on to the approval of the January thirteen minutes. And Chris, I understand you have an update.
Yes, uh, so Mr. McLaughlin called a few minor corrections on page four and on the last page, which Randy, I will get to you, uh, and then also we failed, uh, on to put the agenda item for the election of officers into the minutes. And so, of course, we, we did this, all the slate at one time. Uh, Mr. McLaughlin's the chair, Ms. Tennis is the vice chair, and I am the secretary. And so we will add that portion of last month's agenda into this set of minutes.
Okay, any other comments or corrections?
There's just a spelling correction on Brazil Hammerick. Should be B R A S I L. That would be the only other thing.
Could you share what page that's on?
That very first page where it talked about, uh, others present.
Um, with you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, motion?
That we accept the minutes as, uh, submitted with the changes noted.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approves for the minutes. We'll move on to the Board of Supervisors report. Chris?
Uh, yes, at their, there with the gear. Uh, at their January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, the Board of Supervisors approved the following projects: Douglas and Joanne Harris, Alton Lane, Rockbridge County Farmer's Cooperative, Yellow Rail Lane, David Rayburn with Old Chapel Road, and JBLN Investments LLC off the Third Red Circle. All projects were approved per the recommendation of the planning.
Okay, good. Next, we'll move on to the Bark Electric Cooperative with, on Big Spring Drive. Public hearing will come after the presentation by staff and by V A R C. Uh, the application for temporary special exemption permit for the lay-down yard, uh, in the Ag, Ag and General Use A, uh, A two zoning district. Uh, before we do that, Ms. Hines needs to give us a statement.
Um, I abstain from all matters discussions or voting on the V A R C Electric Cooperative application for a temporary special exemption permit. And my disclosure statement required under the Virginia Code two point two dash three one one five F is on file with the Secretary of the Planning Commission.
Okay, we'll move on back to staff.
Yes, uh, and before I get started, I'd like to do two things. One, uh, Mr. Mike Kaiser, the CEO with V A R C Electric Cooperative is in attendance via Zoom, and I would like to vote him to a panelist. Uh, that is done. And the second thing I'd like to do is, uh, share my screen. All right, I believe everyone can, can see my screen. Um, tonight, uh, is a public hearing for V A R C Electric Cooperative, an application for a temporary special exception permit for public utilities in the agricultural and general use district. That's the A two zoning district. Uh, briefly review the surrounding, the, the area zoning map. Uh, it's fairly easy in this case. Uh, it's agricultural and general use district, so you can see on this map. Uh, the property is in the A two zoning district, and it's, uh, surrounded by the A two zoning district. Uh, the V A R C is outlined in orange and identified as tax map number forty-seven dash A dash fifty, and it's fifteen point two four acres per tax records.
Chris, can you move your picture? I mean, we.
How about that? Better? Oh.
I don't know if you just minimize.
Bear with me here. I'm gonna do a little bit of technical difficulties here.
Thought you could minimize your.
Uh, you can. I'm gonna do.
Thank you.
Perfect. Sorry about that. Uh, we had the viewers in, in, in the way of the, the PowerPoint. Uh, to continue the area zoning map, um, a portion of the V A R C track is located in Zone A, area within the hu- uh, hundred-year special flood hazard overlay zone. The map on the left shows the original mapping of the hundred-year floodplain. The plat on the right shows the extent of the hundred-year floodplain per the May first, two thousand and fifteen Letter of Map Amendment, Loma, that was submitted and approved by FEMA. As you can see, the Loma and, and what happened, I'm gonna use my cursor here again, uh, the Loma has decreased the area, the, again, the, the five, one, two thousand and fifteen Loma through FEMA decreased the, the hundred-year floodplain location to this area here. Um, and, and so, uh, the Loma process was performed prior to Bark requiring the additional seven point two three acres to the west, and therefore, the Loma did not pertain to the area under consideration of lay-down yard. So sort of just to back up here, you can see, this is the plat of the original, uh, the, the original track of the Highland Bell property, eight point zero one acres, and this property line here on this map, so, so follow me on the right-hand side, this property line here was actually right here, going down here, from this point here to, to a, to a point down on the road here. And so what they did was, when they acquired the property, they did a Loma, it reduced the hundred-year floodplain on the property. Then they purchased again a seven, additional seven point, uh, three, seven point two three acres from the Williamson Farm and did it as boundary line adjustment. So again, they vacated this property line, and this is now the correct shape of the, the fifteen acres. Uh, V A R C Electric Cooperative has made an application for a temporary special exception permit in order to continue to utilize the property as a lay-down yard for equipment and material storage for the V A R C connects broadband and fiber project, slash fiber project. The property, again, is located in the agricultural and general use district, A two zoning district, and per section six oh three point oh three dash nine of the Rockbridge County Land Development Regulations, public utilities are a use by special exception. Thought it'd be beneficial, uh, to go over a brief review of the lay-down yard itself. Uh, on July twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, the Board of Supervisors approved a temporary special exception permit to, uh, for the lay-down yard for the broadband project. The permit was valid for two years. Uh, per section eight oh two point oh three dash eleven of the regulations, on March twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the Board of Supervisors approved a two-year extension of the special exception permit. Section eight oh two point oh three dash eleven of the Land Development Regulation states that, quote, "A renewal of a special exception permit does not require a public hearing unless the original conditions in the permit are changed." However, notice of the renewal, uh, will be shown on the agenda of the Board of Supervisors. Condition number two, and that's in quote, uh, condition number two of the, the original July twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen special exception permit states that the expiration upon termination of the V dot permit for approval of a temporary construction entrance no later than April twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. Per conversation with V dot, the current expiration date for the temporary construction permit, excuse me, temporary construction entrance has been extended until November twenty-eighth, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, and that, that exact date was not in your board report. I did report on the agenda item report that it was in November of twenty-one, but I have confirmed, uh, with Mr. Alvin Trout with V dot that that date is November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, in that same conversation, V dot stated that Bark has the ability to request the extension, and V dot would take that request under consideration. Due to the fact that it's a condition will have to be modified, and that's the original condition of the two thousand and seven, uh, seventeen ordinance, a new special exception will have to be obtained to continue the temporary lay-down yard. Tonight, we will be holding a public hearing for a special exception application, for the special exception application. With that, I would like to turn the floor over to Mr. Mike Kaiser, CEO of the V A R C Electric Cooperative, to review additional details, uh, and review the project first. Uh, Mr. Kaiser, with that, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, and, uh, you are muted, but if you unmute. Can you hear us, Mr. Kaiser?
I, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, uh, sounds a little bit off. Try that one more time. Uh, you're muted again.
Hey, can you unmute down there on a, on a phone number? So you have to unmute my phone number, not my video.
Okay, I'm with you. What phone number are you on? The?
Uh, one five seven nine.
Okay, uh, and I believe you have to unmute. I just asked that to be unmuted. Can you unmute that feature? Okay, now try it.
Here we go, Chris. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can see you.
All right, good.
Hear you. Yes, sir.
Perfect. Um, thank you, and thank you, planning commissioners, for giving me a chance to speak. Uh, you know, the original vision of this project for the county and for Bark, uh, when we obtained Highland Bell, was that this would be our headquarters of the broadband subsidiary, and that it would give us a, a launching pad to be able to expand, uh, broadband service to unserved homes and businesses throughout, uh, Rockbridge County and beyond. And that vision has come to fruition today. Uh, we have expanded fiber to the home, um, services to over eight thousand consumers in the Rockbridge and Lexington and Bath County area, and we have plans over the next, uh, four years to continue that expansion until, uh, every Bark Electric member has access to broadband, and many, uh, non-Bark members do as well. Uh, then that's been possible through a series of loans and grants that, uh, Bark has been able to obtain to fund the capital expansion of this project. Um, you know, we, we've been in a very fortunate place to be able to, be able to offer broadband to many people in Rockbridge who had no access to broadband before Bark. Um, and especially, uh, this is important today with the, with the pandemic and students having to do remote learning, people having to work from home. Um, I can't tell you how many comments we've heard from people who are grateful to have broadband service at home from Bark, uh, when they had no, either no options, or very poor options up until uh, the time that we were able to get fiber to them. Uh, the, and the lay-down yard has been invaluable to us. You know, it's never been our intention to have this as a permanent facility for fiber storage or any kind of, uh, use long-term, but this is a massive undertaking to build, um, over a thousand miles of fiber over the next four years, plus approximately six hundred miles of fiber we've built already. Um, and there's, I can't think of any place other than this one where we could have done that and could, can, can continue to keep doing that for the foreseeable future. But like I said, it's not intended to be forever, and it's our hope that this will be the last extension that we have to ask for. Uh, we ex, we expect that within the next two to three years that, um, all consumers in the Bark Electric Service territory, in Rockbridge in particular, will have access to broadband, and that we'll be wrapping up, uh, our service to the west and, uh, beyond Millboro as well over the next four years. So I, although I can't promise today that this will be the last one, it's our hope and our expectation that it will be. Um, and I would just ask that, uh, consideration to be, be given to all, all the good community benefits that have come from this project. Um, and we are, we are looking to just keep, keep those going. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and, if there's no comments from anybody on the Planning Commission, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time. Um, I don't see anybody physically present to do that, so we'll move on to, um, any Zoom candidates, uh, or participants. Mr. Sladen?
Yes, uh, so we do have, we had, we have two. Bear with me here. If, uh, the raise hand, if you would like, if you are online, if you are, if you're online and you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Uh, okay, I do have one hand raised. With that, I'm going to allow its, uh, phone number, uh, area code eight four five has his hand up, excuse me, two people have his hand up, so I'm gonna take them in order, allowed to talk.
Okay, we will ask that, um, make sure that we get the name and the Magisterial District, and please try to, uh, remain within three minutes, please, on our comments.
And you, uh, and you are muted. Or no, now you're not. Can you hear us?
Yes, this is Steve Hart from Cars Creek. Um, thank you, thank you for. Should I go now, Chris? All right, uh, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Um, I'm gonna ask the same question I asked the last two times this came up. Please tell me what is last. My farm is adjacent to Bark's property. I can tell you what I want that farm to look like when I'm dead. And it seems every time we come in, this is an extension, an extension, an extension. Three times two is six years. That is not temporary. That is continuing and ongoing. And I heard Mr. Kaiser say that we hope this is the last one. Hope is not a recognized engineering term. It's not good planning. If we are going to approve this, then the citizens of the county, especially us neighbors, need to know what the end is. What does it look like when we are done and when is it done? Now, that comment relates specifically to the facility that is next, that is next door to my farm. My second question really relates to cost and benefit. Mr. Kaiser is absolutely correct. Many of us have benefited from the installation of Bark's fiber and the improved internet services. My family is not one of them. The ro, the, the fiber ends a mile either side of my house. It's gone to Goshen, it's gone around Big Hill, it's gone up House Mountain Lane, but my family is left on the other side of the digital divide, as are many families. The only way that our county gets this done, the only way, is a partnership between Bark and the county. Bark's gotta do the work, the county's gotta do the enabling legislation and the permits. But the county's given a lot to Bark. The school, all of the grants that were mentioned, I know that's not county, that's state and federal. All of these things have benefited Bark. Bark's got that service. Bark generates revenue from that. But frankly, there's a lot of us that have given, but aren't getting any benefit. I get to live next door to an industrial zone, and currently, I don't have internet, and there's lots of people like me that don't have internet. And if we're gonna approve this, we being the members of the county, it needs to have an end date, it needs to have a schedule. It needs to meet the needs of the entire county. If we're not gonna serve all the citizens, then all the citizens don't need to be giving something for this. Now, all this being said, I really appreciate what Bark's doing. It is absolutely essential to the future of our county that we get high-speed internet out into the rural areas. It's essential for values, it's essential for commerce. I need it for my farm, lots of folks need it. But everybody needs it, and we do not need to be perpetuating a digital divide in our county. Thank you for the opportunity to make comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Um, are there any more?
Yes. All right, uh, Mr. Brett Greaves, I am going to promote you and ask you to unmute.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Perfect. We can hear you well. Thank you, sir.
Great. Uh, my name's Brett Greaves, and my wife and I are just six weeks in being new residents to Rockbridge County, and excited to be there and, and thankful for Bark. We have cable at our home, and, um, we live only a couple hundred yards from the Bark location. And my request would be really of Bark and its landscaping and just beautification around its facility that the Planning Commission would consider having to make an investment in providing screening and shrubbery that really fits more of the neighborhood. And I think that's a pretty reasonable and pretty easy, and as I'm new to the area, that we're four years into it, and, and so I just, that would be mine, more fitting with the area and the neighborhood, and it sounds like this is, could go on for two, three, four more years, and it seems like we ought to ask them to make that improvement to the property. Thank you for that consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Greaves. Just later, are there other Zoom?
I do not believe so. I will, I, this morning, I passed two comments along. One was addressed to the citizen comments. Uh, that was Mr. Hart's, uh, and so, so I don't think it, uh, if, for the, for the time, I don't think we need to repeat those, uh, read those out loud, because Mr. Hart is present, of course, and made, made comments. Uh, we also forwarded on, uh, several other comments that we received this, this afternoon, but, but, I'm sorry, most of those were directed right, directly toward y'all via email and did not come in, uh, via the Planning Commission citizen comment, period. Uh, with that being said, uh, give me a few. Uh, that is it for the hands raised, and there are no open questions.
Okay, at this time, do we want to share any of those written comments that were, were sent to us?
Uh, I don't, it's not necessary, because they were, again, the, the only one that came in, to my knowledge, the only one that came in through the citizen comment, Planning Commission citizen comments, was Mr. Hart's, and, and of course, he, he has already spoken, and I assume, uh, addressed, addressed, uh, the Planning Commission, obviously. The, uh, again, the other ones that we did receive were, were emailed directly to y'all, and, and not the request to read out loud.
Okay.
But you're, you're, you're aware of.
We are aware of them, and I think they, the others also highlighted both the comments with Dart and with Greaves as well, so, um, if there are no other comments, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the citizen comment portion, bring it back to the, uh, to the Planning Commission for comment and discussion. And, uh, anybody have something at this point?
I have a few questions. Um, you know, one, one of which, I'll bring this down. Um, I have a couple of questions. One is, it, at what point does the temporary lay-down yard become permanent? I mean, is there nothing that says, you know, once you, I mean, is there a certain number of times they can request that we keep extending this? Because the idea of three or four more years seems like a lot to ask these people, especially people who are not benefiting from the A R C services.
Um, they have the ability to apply for it, obviously, multiple times, you know, and, and again, just to summarize what happened the first time, we did not go through a bub, bona fide public hearing because we used that section eight oh two of the ordinance. That was the, the original one. Of course, we held a public hearing, uh, and, and received those comments. The second one, while we did do mailings to the, to the adjacent landowners, we did not do, it was not a bona fide public hearing. Uh, and we're changing the condition, therefore, we need to have a bona fide public hearing with a new application, but that would not prevent them, uh, on reapplying extra, after, after a, a two-year permit, I assume, is what we're talking about here as well.
And is there a, a way in which that we can enforce these proffers, you know, as far as screening? You know, I, I definitely can see that that's an issue out there. It does not look good. Um, you know, we need some better trees and, you know, better buffers and things like that. Is, how do we enforce those things? I know we put proffers out all the time, but how do we enforce that? Is there any?
And we talked about that. I don't, I don't think they're out of compliance, that now there, there's some kind, I, I spoke with Mr. Kaiser today about the original buffer, uh, directly along Big Spring Road and the numbers, uh, but they are what's shown on the plan, and, and that was, that was the only, there was no more buffer that extended towards Freysburg Road and round the corner.
So all the mud and all that, I mean, that was just part of the plan. I mean, I thought you said something about there was supposed to be some grass and some things planted, so.
Yeah, per the plan, absolutely, and that, that's not planting support, but per the plan, uh, the original plan shows, that's in your package and, and that we can share here, uh, shows this to be a grass area. Obviously, with four years of heavy-duty use, uh, that grass is gone, and, and so, um, that's a tough one, you know, as far as to say substantial compliance with site plan presented and not having grass in certain areas, and so, uh, and the ability to grow grass under an active lay-down yard. That, that's also a problem.
Right, okay.
Well, how can we get better buffer? You know, as I look at the, the Leland Cypress around the, uh, around the electrical solar array, uh, those things don't, don't seem to be growing very fast.
Sure.
And they're not, they're not creating a visual buffer. I, I would like to see more layering, um, along that as well as around the lay-down yard with some fast-growing native stuff.
Uh, all right, so, so what I did, uh, y'all in attendance, I've shared my screen again, uh, shared with this, this with most, uh, most of the, most of the people that are on. Uh, but what I'd like to do is pull up the existing site plan that we're working under. There with the gear.
Page eighteen, Chris.
Perfect, thank you. Try to boost it up a little bit. All right, so this, this is the approved plan that was associated with the original special exception permit, and you're, you're dealing with two different fold here, and, and so the first, the first part of the special exception permit is the, is the solar field. That, that has been approved, that was a very similar, a very similar design as far as landscaping is this. It showed landscaping along Big Spring Road here, uh, as you can see with my hand, and, and it really relied on, this is unlabeled, so this is the existing vegetation along Freysburg Road. The, the only other vegetation on this side here is, is some, is some landscaping that. that was associated with, uh, the collection center there. And, and that's been, that's been implemented. And so if you're, we can, what we can do at this juncture is recommend additional, you know, as a condition, as part of this discussion, we can recommend that Mr. Kaiser, uh, revisit the landscaping area in this area, uh, this area and then, and then for the lay-down yard itself. So we're not talking about the solar project, obviously, we're talking about the lay-down yard and landscaping associated with land, the lay-down. Does that answer?
Chris? If you look at that, this is a, this is a plan that we approved, or the solar yard and the landscaping that comes across, that landscaping there was finished to the end of the solar field, like it's shown on his plan. Um, so I mean, if you, you take a look at it, it's not done. If you look at the, at the next photo up, you can see, uh, what I'm talking about.
Sure, and so what that is, is you can actually, and, and per, per the aerial photos is actually a point that, that I didn't realize until today. You can actually see, so, so my focus on this, and I wish I had a split screen, but my focus is gonna be twofold. Is one, let me zoom in a little bit here. So you can see the extent of landscaping under Big Spring Road. I'm actually gonna zoom in a little bit more. Two things, one, you can see the landscaping starts here and comes around the corner and then ends right here. Another thing I, I realized today is that the entrance is located here. And you can see, the point of this is, is this is the corner of the fence. Again, this is gonna be the entrance and this is gonna be the extent of landscaping, if you remember this corner. So now, if I switch back over to this plan, you can actually see the original plan was a little bit different. It, it showed a, a longer driveway going into this section of fence. And then exactly what Mr. Lucas said, showed the landscaping extending to this corner. So in reality, what's happened is they have started here, uh, they have started here wrapped around the corner, but they actually, they actually stopped approximately at this location and then the road goes directly in from here to here. And so there is, separate from this process, separate from this, this process that we're going through here, that, that I would like to meet Mr. Kaiser and look at the potential discrepancies of what was proposed and what was planted in this area. But again, that is, that is part of, that would be zoning enforcement, part of the original special exception permit for the solar field, not pertaining to tonight's discussion on how to better buffer the, the lay-down yard. The lay-down yard, with comments we were seeing, could, could be better received or, or have a better, uh, be better received, if you will, to have additional buffer in this area here, especially because the road does not go like this. It actually just goes straight like this, if you could follow my cursor. And we can also look at any required landscaping along Big Spring to potentially look at any landscaping, uh, along Big Spring, again, solely for the lay-down yard, not going back to, to a previously approved permit that's not under review for the solar project.
I wrote out there today, the, uh, the driveway going into the fence, it looks like it'd been turning trucks around in the field and it's a mud hole, to say the least, uh, before, between Big Spring Road and the actual gate going into the lay-down yard. Um, and I, and I sent everybody a, a drawing that I did as far as what I thought would work on screening. Or we could go up the fence road, depending on what would work. But, um, if we could, if we could get some additional screen in there, I think that might keep some of the, um, adjacent landowners a little bit happier. And, um, also, it would already be in place, uh, in the future for the solar field. When they get ready to add it on, it would be done. So it wouldn't be anything we'd have to add into, uh, the expense for, for B A R C. Um, just makes sense. If we're gonna leave, if we're not gonna screen along with the road going in and we're gonna leave that field, grassy field and grassy area there where they're turning trucks around in and doing whatever, uh, I think you need to put some gravel down because it's a, it's a mud hole. And I'm, I understand it's been wet, but we've had a couple wet years, so, um, be better to keep it on the property than have it in the road. Thank you.
Yes, a quick question and apologies if I missed it. Is this, uh, requesting two-year or four-year?
It's a, it, two-year permit is what we.
That's all we can do, we cannot do a four-year?
Well, it could, it could certainly be. We could certainly talk about the timeframe, you know, it was a meant to, a temporary permit. There was no specified timeframe. That usually comes with the conditions and the ordinance, so that's.
I'm hearing that it's gonna be at least four years, so I don't know why, if, if we recommend approval, I don't know why we wouldn't do four versus two. So the same thing didn't happen in two more years. We're discussing all the issues that are pertinent now.
I think if we get into four years, then we're talking about permit. I mean, it's already been four years, you know, now we're talking about eight years. You know, we need to talk about, they need to, this needs to go. I mean, and they talked about that before, I think there was a lot of people out there that were upset about that when you start talking about it for a long term. And I think that's what we're getting to, is long-term now.
Another, another huge part of this conversation is obviously substantial compliance with site plan and how that reflects with VDOT's interest. Mike, uh, twofold on the conversation, if I could call on you, Mr. Kaiser. Um, is, is one, um, we did have a conversation with VDOT, you contacting VDOT. Obviously, you, you had contacted VDOT and followed up with me. I did not receive that phone call from, from Mr. Trout. But if you want to review, review that, you know, your, your conversation with Mr. Alvin Trout, the, the engineer at VDOT that, that handles some of these permits. And then second, sort of talk about a little bit more details on, on the timeframe you're talking about. Because, because our earlier conversation between you and I over the phone is you were, you were pretty adamant about a two-year timeframe and, and not coming back. And so that, that's a surprise to this conversation. So with that, I'd like you to touch base on most of those things, your conversation with VDOT and then, and then reiterate the timeframe discussion.
Sure, Chris. Um, the first one, to your first question, spoke with Mr. Trout and requested that we align the expiration of the entrance set with the expiration of the date that the, that the planning commission, ultimately the board of supervisors sets on this special exception permit. Just so we didn't have two, um, two expiration dates that weren't in alignment. So he was, I had asked him to go out there and take a look at it and then get in contact with you and, um, and see if we couldn't get those two dates in alignment then. And, and I asked him if they would just, uh, agree to set theirs at whatever the county set the expiration date of this upcoming renewal. So I'm hoping that that's in process. It sounds like he was gonna do that and then contact you. The other, uh, to the other issue, um, let me be a little bit more clear on it. So our current plans, we have a four-year construction plan just got finalized. And when I say four years, I'm talking about BARK electric system, uh, fiber project system-wide. And, you know, we serve five counties, not just Rockbridge County. And so that four years was, uh, meant to reference everything we need to do to our, to the west and the north and the south, not Rockbridge County. Uh, our plans for Rockbridge County to, to wrap up our BARK electric service territory will be done within the next two years. I can't say exactly when, but I believe it'll, it will be definitely within two-year timeframe. Um, what, when I say hope to wrap it up, when I say, what I mean by that is, you know, circumstances frequently change. We just received CARES Act funding for broadband expansion to, um, several, um, non-BARK electric service area, service areas right before the end of the year. And we expanded fiber quickly to, to get those customers served with broadband service. Those, that was, um, many miles of fiber to customers who, uh, we were able to get some CARES Act federal funding to build, extend broadband to. So it's things like that that come up, grant-funded, grant-funded opportunities to expand fiber to more people um, that aren't our electric customers, that when, you just don't know what's gonna happen in the next, you know, it sounds like there's gonna be another round of stimulus and who knows what happens after that. Um, and I, and I'm not trying to leave the impression that we want to keep extending this permanently, definitely because BARK certainly does not. Uh, you know, we, we originally had plans to make this an expansion phase of community solar and we still expect to do that, um, but the fiber project has taken priority right now. So I, I am comfortable with extending this for two years right now. And then, um, and again, expecting that we will not need to come back in for another one. And possibly, if we, if we continue to get grant dollars, we'll, we look for another solution besides this field to be able to continue expanding broadband service, uh, you know, to people that are unserved.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Um, I, I for one am super appreciative to B A R C for the, the broadband. It's made, it's been a game changer for those of us out on Walker's Creek, uh, major game changer. Uh, that said, I still would like to see the visual, uh, for consideration of the neighbors, so that they don't have to, to look at the mess that, that is obviously necessary to be there. But, um, for the length of time, for two years, if we can somehow mitigate that uh, with some, some visual buffering, some better screening, fast-growing vegetation, I don't know, or whatever. That's, that's kind of, you know, the, the good and the bad. Uh, so what they're doing is great, but I think we just need to try to hide that a little bit better over the next couple of years. And again, if, if we're gonna be expanding the solar option, then I think Mr. Lucas made a good point. That would be stepping in the right direction down the road.
I'd like to see there be a date, you know, it's gonna be done by X date and, and there'd be some consequences if it's not, you know. I, I don't know what this could be, but, you know, I think that's something we need to explore because, you know, obviously, we've had projects that we're gonna put an eight-foot-tall fence in, it's been 15 years and we're still waiting for the fence. So, you know, I just, I don't like these things that just keep going on and on. These neighbors have been looking at this for four years already.
And, and I think that, to, to answer that question, I think it's the renewal that, or renewal or lack of renewal of the use. I don't think, I don't think, other than revisiting the buffer in front and, and, you know, extending it like we talked about, you know, I don't need to re-review it. But again, I don't think there's any outstanding plantings that they haven't done. It's just, it's just the use. And then based on this discussion, working with the applicant to see if we can get additional buffers for this application.
Right, I'm not saying that he is, you know, that they have not complied with what they, that they were gonna do. I just think it's insufficient. Um, now that it's been four years, you know, it's one thing to be two years and after you get into four years of people turning trucks around and whatever, of course, there's gonna be no grass, there's gonna be a mud pit. So I just think we need to address that for, for the neighbors. Um, you know, be respectful of, of them as well.
How close are the closest neighbors? I mean, who are we screening for, you know, are they, are they, it's been a while since I've been out there. Is it a hundred yards, is it a quarter of a mile?
Right across the street. Yeah, there's one, well, to answer your question directly, uh, the closest neighbor is from, from the actual, let's say, the holding yard, not necessarily the, I'm sorry, the, the lay-down yard. The closest neighbor appears to be about 386 feet, uh, from, from the fence itself. Uh, and then you go on to across Route 60, you're talking about 550 feet. Um, and then, uh, and then exceeds that. But to answer your question directly, about 350 feet.
Do we receive comment from the closest one?
Not, not at this time, no. We have in the past, but not at this time.
And I know that some of the neighbors, when I've talked to them, the people that have called me today, you know, they've said they've put in 100 trees. You know, they've spent $20,000, you know, putting in trees and doing things. Yeah, I certainly think BARK, you know, with 8,000 new customers could, you know, afford to invest a little bit when they've been handed, you know, a property for their use. You know, I'd like to see that. I do appreciate what they've done, I, you know, I don't see how parents are, you know, educating their children without this. So, you know, I'm grateful for that, make sure that this is not an on.
Oh. The first gentleman who lives within a half a mile of the place who doesn't have, or whatever, that doesn't have broadband, um, because he's not a B A R C customer, if they can get to the point they can provide service to him, I think he would be more happy to look at a, a lay-down yard for an extra two years. Um, as long as we can get screened and the screen, I think, is the biggest thing. We get this thing screened and we do a little something there with the, with the entrance going in there where there's not some mud coming out, it won't be near as bad, uh, in my opinion. Solar panels or lay-down yard, it's still, you know, it's serving the community and it's serving Rockbridge County well as far as my part goes.
Well, and, and I'm just honest, they're serving Rockbridge County, but when they're using that lay-down yard and they're going to four other counties, you know, it's not just Rockbridge County. I mean, we're the ones being impacted the most by it, but we're not getting all the benefits, you know.
I'd, I'd like to see us have our cake and eat it too. I think BARK needs, needs that space. And I also think we need to have neighbor consideration as well. Um, is there a way that we could, uh, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Kaiser, if you would be willing to come back next time, uh, look at some, maybe some problem solving on, uh, some of the issues you've heard tonight? Maybe work with, with, uh, Mr. Laidon? Come back with some, some?
Yeah, I would, I would be happy to, um, if you want, if you're suggesting tabling this for a month and letting us work with Chris on some solutions, we'd, we'd be happy to, to look at that. We, we want to be neighborly too.
Well, I, I'm just knowing of you, I know that's the case. And, uh, that's why I would like to see if we can resolve this, uh, neighborly decently in an order. Um, and by tabling, I, that's my suggestion. I don't know if the rest of the planning commission feels the same way or not.
It would be, it would actually, the, the press department postponing taking action, correct? Yeah, the set over. I believe you're right. So that would be. It's still the same, same thing. You'll just still, yeah, that would be your, so, so this would, uh, would that be in a form of a motion or just, okay? So that would, that would require a motion to postpone taking action until the March 10th Planning Commission meeting.
And as far as public hearing, we've closed the public hearing. We would take, we would take citizen comments at that time.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, okay.
To allow further, to allow for further comments at the March 10th public meeting. Of course, everyone has the opportunity still to, to email y'all, just as, just as we always, right?
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're doing this correctly.
So I'll make a motion that we, um, set aside any action on the B A R C special exception permit for the lay-down yard until the March 10th, uh, Planning Commission meeting.
Have a motion? Robert and me, second. Okay, we have a motion, Hannah second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas? Yes?
He's raising his hand.
I think, yeah, raise that, okay, motion carries. And so we will revisit that in March. That now brings us on to the White's Travel Center on Raking Road.
Yes, Mr. Kaiser, uh, as always, thank you for your time and I will follow up directly with you tomorrow morning.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser, and thanks to all others who offered their, your opinions tonight.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, uh, moving on to the next giant agenda item, this is site plan review, uh, for, uh, White's Travel Center. Uh, Mr. Russ Orson's attendance with Parkinson's Orson has submitted the following plan for building addition, modification to the car parking lot associated with the building addition and plan for modification for the flow of traffic associated with the building addition. Uh, at the August 14th, 2019 meeting, the planning commission reviewed and approved a site plan for a 2,000, excuse me, 20,073 square foot addition to the rear portion of the existing White's Travel Center. The current plan increases the proposed building addition to 27,250 square feet. Along with the, uh, proposed square footage, uh, that proposed increase in square footage, plans also include modifications to the par, park, parking lot, par, parking lot that adjoins the proposed addition and modifications to the flow of traffic around the proposed addition to the larger truck parking lots to the south. The package, package includes a site plan for the building addition and the site plan, including erosion semi-control plans for the change of flow of traffic and associated building conditions. Uh, for your convenience, Parkinson's Orson submitted a single sheet for showing all building, all proposed building modifications. Uh, and then it just goes on to say that that sheet was on the last page of your package. Um, additional information in your package includes a 2000 aerial, uh, 2018 aerial photo of the building site. Obviously, a site plan showing the building addition, site plan showing the modifications to the flow of traffic, lighting plan and exhibit plan showing the modifications, uh, as discussed. Um, with that, I'd like to share my screen, I believe. Um, with that, I'd like to share my screen, I believe. Uh, and, and there has been, there has been a modification made to the plan, uh, not to the building addition, but to the, to the flow of traffic. So let me, let me back up here a little bit and turn the, this portion of the presentation over to Mr. Orson. But bear with me here for discussion purposes. I'd like to share my screen. That's it. With that, uh, I'll turn this portion over to Mr. Russell. Thank you.
So Gavin couldn't be this evening. He, he's been working on this project. So when he was, uh, briefing me on the project this morning and we were looking over the circulation, I had some questions regarding how the circulation worked and, uh, and then in speaking with Koress, I think there were questions. So we, uh, added some arrows to show how the, uh, how the circulation is intended to work with the, with these modifications. And, um, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's busy, but it's going to actually flow better than. This is working better.
With the thing in your microphone, because I can't hear you online at the same time.
Yeah. So, so this is the exist, existing circulation coming in. Here of course is our new addition. Here is the existing building. Um, this over here is the Blue Beacon that's been there for gosh, probably five years now or something like that. So, um, this is the entrance into the Blue Beacon. It's the trucks that are going to go get washed. They, they come around and then they come back out here this way. This will be new concrete for this, for this turn, for the turning movement for the, for the truck. And, um, uh, this of course back here is all of the, uh, the parking for the, for the trucks. Um, so, so that's the circulation that's going to be so that, so the kind of the obvious weird one is that, uh, trucks that come out of Blue Beacon, having been washed, um, do come around and go back into the parking lot, come back out and join the flow. And this course is the one way flow that goes back out uh, to steel, uh, steel sport. Um, uh, this is a site plan process. It's not a rezoning or conditional use or anything. It's just a site plan. Uh, in this county, we, we come to planning commission for site plan approval, but it's a, um, it's a, I guess, the ministerial act or something. But anyway, so this is a site plan, a blue for the site plan. The, I talked to Gavin this evening and, and I talked to Bobby as well. The addition is mostly going to be retail. Um, Bobby wants to have some, uh, carry a couple of lines of boots and jeans and, and clothing and whatnot. There's going to be a chrome shop in there. Um, and by shop, I mean retail, not, not, uh, mechanic shop, but, uh, where truckers can buy various, uh, chrome items for their trucks, things like that. So it's, it's retail. And, uh, uh, I believe that that's about it unless you have any questions.
So, so one thing I do, uh, I would like to go over while, while I'll continue to share my screen. I think I had an aerial photo in here and it's actually probably up here. Yes. So just to briefly review what happens now, of course, the, the addition we're talking about is in the rear here. And so a, a point to make what happens now is the same flow of traffic comes here. They go, the, the building addition will be in this area, of course, what we're talking about. But, but one thing worth noting now, what happens is they come around here, the larger trucks come around here and then continue this way. And it's actually a one way in, one way, the same entrance utilizes.
Ingress and equal, correct?
Uh, and so, so this, this gets, this is a bottleneck now, obviously. And then the current proposal is to make this going out only so the traffic can continue around this way and exit while this traffic comes down this way, goes around the building addition and actually goes right through here into straight in, oop, straight into the parking. So I thought that was for clarification purposes, part of what, what the flow is now, apparently speaking of what, what their, what their goal is or what their, what the purpose of, of the change of flow of traffic is.
Yeah.
The, the, yes. So I'm still, yeah, I'm still sharing. So bear with me here. Yes. Here's the original.
Yeah. So, and, and so you saw those backend spaces all along here that are going away. And so if you think about that circulation coming this way, the trucks going past those backend spaces and then backing into the spaces along here, uh, similar to these actually, uh, removing that is, is, is probably as much a help uh, as anything else we're doing.
Russ, will that be, will that be car parking where that, where those right in there is that?
So this right, so this is, is car parking right here and this is bus parking right here.
Hey Russ, with the, uh, the bottom area there, are you, is the tractor trailer traffic going to go to Steel Sport Road or are they going to circle back around like they do now and go out by the?
Go out by the Burger King.
Yeah, they can't, they can't go.
Yeah. I did, I said. I'm not, I'm not yet. It, you know, it connects through there, but the trucks are not allowed to go that way. The cars can, but the trucks can't. Yep.
I think that's going to, I think that's going to help the, you know, the car traffic in back there as well, uh, taking away those parking spot right there. Just having been in there a number of times, uh, a little confusing, even in a small car with those big tractor trailers right there. I think that's going to be good for the center as well. Um, all the lighting and all that kind of stuff is in a.
Chris pointed out to me this morning that, that there's one light that we're relocating and it's possible that it doesn't comply with your current ordinance. And so we've added to the plan a note that it says that it has to comply with the current ordinance, even if it currently doesn't, but we relocated it.
And then, and the other fold, of, of the other fold of that is in your package, there is some, there is some wall packs associated with those, but they are fully cut off and designed to, to not, not light the building, but to light the parking lot. Of course, you, you have the locations of those and the, the exact specs of those in your package. So almost for, for discussion purposes, I'm going to stop sharing this, go back to the original screen here and turn back over.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Mr. Lucas, do you have anything?
Only thing I've got is the one problem that we've been having at, uh, interchange, which I see VDOT's taking care of some of that. And, uh, I think maybe Chris has talked to Mr. Perkins about and about and maybe even Bobby about, uh, doing away some of that truck parking out front to prevent some of the truck stacking coming in off of Brave Fein Road, which has got nothing to do with this. I'm, I know, but it's just a good time to talk about it. Um, I believe that would help. But, uh, this definitely will help, uh, should help the flow around the building there. I've been in there before and it's tight coming around to get through that little entrance between the old yellow freight property and the back little whites property. So this will definitely help a flow. And adds more retail space too, so. Just would like to see something done.
So we, we just for site plan approval, we just.
Yeah, you would make a motion.
We need a motion to that, so.
I make a motion. Oh, go ahead. I make a motion that we approve the site plan as submitted for White Truck Stop additions.
So we have motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I understand that Chris had a busy day and we added to his busy day. So we are fortunate to have Chris to work with.
We are, we are definitely blessed.
I appreciate that. We're, we're doing pretty dang on good at eight o'clock, I will say on item number seven.
Okay. I've lost all my sheets. They're German. All right. We have a motion. We have a motion. We have a motion then a second. All in favor? Great gusto. Motion carries.
Perfect. And again, I'll, I'll follow up with Mr. Kaiser first thing in the morning and we will see, uh, if we can, uh, have a uh, plan, revised plan showing landscaping and some additional. So I appreciate y'all uh, work on, on all the items this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for all your work. And I think, I think we did good work tonight and got out of here in an hour.